This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pacheco, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Hocken.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Chair.
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 At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Over to the board.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org backslash Symbly. The meeting is being livestreamed on youtube.com backslash ISD535. The recording of the meeting will also be posted following completion of the meeting. Our first item is 3.1 Prep for Action: Policy Committee Recommendations Procedure 413A Supporting Transgender and/or Gender Expansive Students. This is a Prep for Action item. The Board is scheduled to take action on this item at the July 16th regular meeting. Our legal counsel, our legal counsel is present via Zoom in the event we have any questions related to the procedure. Superintendent Pacheco.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and Board members. We are living through a time of profound change in society's understanding of gender identity and gender expansive identities, and the issue before us tonight is squarely in that space. I will just share that I was recently, not in an RPS school, but walking through our community, and a woman stopped me and actually got quite emotional and had tears in her eyes, and she said, "I have no doubt that my child would not be alive had my child not been allowed to live true to their gender identity." And I'm proud to say that her child, who is no longer a student, went to a Rochester High School, and she credited that school's careful support for her child with the fact that that RPS grad is out thriving in the world today. But she stopped me because she knew that this subject was very much a topic of discussion in our community and would soon be before this Board. And so to briefly recap some of the background and the draft procedure that is before you, I'll remind the Board, as you know, that I issued administrative guidelines on September 9th, 2023, that were based on a model policy from Minnesota School Boards Association and that were developed with advice from our own legal counsel, who is Mick Walzberger with us tonight. Ms. Sam is working to make sure that we can get input from Mick in the discussion should the Board request it. The guidelines were developed in response to requests from our staff, who were seeing issues of gender identity coming into our schools and in our classrooms, and they were being handled, I'm confident in saying, well, but they were asking for clarity. And so we issued those guidelines, shared them with all of our administrators. I do have to add, for the first time talking about this publicly, they were never a secret. They were shared with more than 120 administrators. It's not strange in an organization for a leader to give direction to managers. Delta Airlines does not post for all staff and all customers the guidelines it gives to pilots. And so these were administrative guidelines, but the intent was always for this Board to take up the development of what is now before you, which is a procedure. It states very clearly on the guidelines I issued that the Board would take this up during the 2023-2024 school year. The Board's Policy Committee was waiting to do that until new federal Title IX guidelines, which were developed over many years with thousands and thousands of sources of input and expert committees, were issued. And those issues, the 2024 Title IX final rule came out on April 19th, 2024, and the Board's Policy Committee began its work shortly thereafter. The result of that work, and I want to thank the committee for their efforts, is the draft of the procedure that is before you now. It includes review and revisions based upon the advice of our legal counsel. The legal counsel, who Mick Walzberger, who's with us, assures us that the draft meets all applicable state and federal laws. We also, we're very attentive to school board policy and that the draft procedure also is aligned with RPS policies, and the relevant statutes and policies are noted in the draft. And so as I believe Chair Nathan is going to guide the discussion in a moment through the primary sections of this procedure, which focus initially on privacy and access to information, then move on to parent access to information. The procedure deals with names, pronouns, gender markers, and school district records. It addresses gender segregated facilities and gender segregated activities, classes, rules, policies, and practices. It addresses dress codes, school trips, sports, and extracurricular activities, discrimination, harassment, and bullying. Let me briefly conclude by touching on one subject that I know has also been a subject of significant discussion, which is parental access to information. And candidly, concerns about this have very much been raised from multiple perspectives. Some people very strongly wanting to see parents having access to all information, others concerned about it. As we have worked with legal counsel and reviewed the Title IX guidelines from the federal government and our own state laws, the draft before you has two key elements that I want to highlight before our discussion. First, if a parent or guardian asks for information on their student's experience of gender identity in school, staff must provide that information if they possess it at the time of the request. In addition, the procedure says nothing prohibiting staff from sharing information with parents and guardians as they believe is appropriate and in the interest of the student to do so. Now, the procedure does not require that notification, but we do not do that in any area of our work, where we would require teachers, counselors, principals to be informing parents of something that they actually, the teacher, the staff member, might have limited, imperfect, or incomplete information about, or the expertise to judge. But that doesn't mean it cannot happen. That is an important point to make as we go into the conversation. To require some type of notification would actually bring these issues into the classroom, into work outside the expertise and the focus of our academic work with students. We trust our staff to make good decisions about the information that they share with parents and families. They do that in issues of academic readiness, they do that in issues of disabilities, they do that in issues of potential use of substance abuse, they do that in issues of mental health, and I'm confident that they would do that in these areas as well. That said, as I mentioned at the outset, we are in a, as a society, learning about these very complex issues. And so after the Board's approval of a final draft of this procedure, we will roll up our sleeves and develop extensive professional development and information for staff so that we are reflective of best practices in how all aspects of this procedure, as it is finally approved by the Board, are implemented, because we know that the procedure is critical, and yet the ways that we support our staff in implementing that procedure are equally critical. And a final point, Madam Chair, that I would make is that this is, as you and the brother members of the Policy Committee know, a procedure for a reason. The Board policies that are referenced in this procedure already provide very clear direction, I believe, for the broad sweep of our approach to this issue. The logic of having this be a procedure is that it will allow us to refine that procedure as we learn more and as best practices emerge. It is a more efficient and quicker process for the Board to revise procedure than it is policy, and that's why the Policy Committee chose to recommend the development of procedure, which implements the Board policies that are noted in the draft. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the chance to give that background and an overview, and we look forward to the conversation. It looks like we do have Mick up there. Mick, you are on a very large screen, and so it's further amplifying your expertise there visually. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. We thought the best way to go through this would be to do it section by section. The draft procedures are on the screen for those of you who may not have them in front of you, and we'll just start with the purpose section, and I'll ask Board members if they have any questions or comments. Obviously, we won't be able to resolve whatever issues come up tonight unless it's a, you know, a language item we can agree on. So I'm going to commit, and I'll commit the Policy Committee too, sorry, guys, that we are going to document every piece of feedback we get, whether it's from the Board members or whether it comes from the community, and you'll be able to see how we resolve each one of them in the final draft that you'll be asked to approve. So bear with me if I take some time to take notes of what you all are saying. So, any comments on the purpose section?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Under purpose, line six, beginning with these procedures, and before I read and inquire regarding this particular, these two lines or sentences, is it possible to share or give some indication as to the severity of this problem? And if I might address it this way, often when we have in times past reported out our discipline data, it's been shared that 95% or more of our students don't have any problems with discipline. It's a small percentage of our students that do so. And I'm curious, this is a rather substantial policy, and all students are important. I am, however, curious as to the magnitude of the problem, not really thinking that you might have that information available tonight, and I don't mean to refer to transgender and/or gender expansive students as a problem. It's more so just an inquiry regarding the effort which has gone into the establishment of this draft procedure. Specifically, I'm curious, the statement states that these procedures do not and cannot anticipate every situation that may occur, as every student is unique. I fully accept that and embrace that true statement, okay? The support for each student must be assessed and addressed individually based upon the student's specific requests and needs. I'm curious as to what that might look like. That's a broad statement, and is it only a statement that applies to transgender and/or gender expansive students? That two-line sentence. I realize the procedure is in reference to transgender and gender expansive, but it's the same level of care, compassion, and thoroughness in existence for the other 17,900-plus students.
Just so I'm clear, Director Barlow, you're asking, when you use the word severity of the problem, is this a situation that, by its prevalence in our district, we're writing the procedure, or are there other reasons that the procedure might be necessary?
Actually, how prevalent is it in our district? Okay?
Okay. Superintendent?
Director Barlow, I don't have an exact number for you, nor I think, nor did you ask for one. This is a relatively small number of students who are, would be the direct focus of this policy, but what caused me to issue the guidelines last year was very clear feedback from staff, not just administrators but also teachers, that they needed clarity in how to respond to that relatively small number of instances. And so I hope that gets at part of your question. Numerically, we're not talking about a lot of students, but that wanting to be sure that those students are being served appropriately was a very big issue, which led me to develop those guidelines that would be replaced by this, by this procedure.
And thank you for that explanation, and just for means of helping me align what is written and what is said. Is it your belief that all students then benefit from these significant statements that conclude item one purpose, that the support for each student must be assessed and addressed individually based upon the student's specific requests and needs? Do you believe that to be true with all of our students?
I do, Director Barlow. I think all students benefit from inclusive and welcoming schools. This policy also does commit, and we have made alternative provisions if parents or guardians are concerned about certain environments. And so we would do that were a parent or guardian, wanting to have their student, for instance, not in a locker room where there were students who were expressing a gender identity other than the one they were born with. That, to my knowledge, has not happened, but that would be something that obviously would be, have to be handled skillfully, but our administrators and this procedure would make provision for that requirement. And so I think, Director Barlow, that is one way that this procedure does reflect that diverse needs of students. If a family felt strong about that, they would let their principal know, and they would, this procedure would direct them to make an accommodation.
Thank you.
And this would be my first question for Mick. I believe it's also fair to say that because of the new Title IX rule, which goes into effect August 1, there's a requirement for districts to develop a response to the requirements in the federal law. So we, there's a, there's a federal law that guides all of this. The districts have to create a response, whether it's a policy or procedure or guidelines, and this is the way that we are also responding to that requirement in federal law. Do I have that date right? Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's a, even more than that, you know, in Minnesota, the Minnesota Human Rights Act is more restrictive and more corrective, and these procedures not only implement your policy, but implement the requirements of the Minnesota Human Rights Act as well.
Did everybody hear that?
No.
Could you say it one more time?
Yes. I was saying, these procedures not only implement your policy, your general policy statement, but also implement the requirements of the Minnesota Human Rights Act as well as Title IX. So I think that these are certainly consistent with all aspects of the law.
So both Title IX and the Minnesota Human Rights Act, guys, implementation of this procedure?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Both, this implements both Title IX and the Minnesota Human Rights Act.
Yes.
Okay. In case everybody didn't hear that. Director McLaughlin.
Director Pacheco, I appreciate what you just said, and the way I looked at this sentence in the purpose and the purpose in general, the support of each student must be assessed and addressed individually based on all the student's specific, on a student's specific requests and needs. I see that as something that empowers both the students and families to raise their concerns, both with administration and with you, if necessary, to get their requests and needs met. Is that another way to look at this?
Yeah, I think it is. I wish I had been a little more succinct as you were in responding to Director Barlow's point. I think, I think that's the way I would see that purpose statement as well.
And it may be not just on this topic, but on topics in general, that that's, that's our goal, is to empower students and families to advocate for themselves and their needs because they know that best.
Yes. There's, there's a cliche that gets said often, but I really do believe it's what we strive for. We meet students where they are, and we meet their families where they are, and we respond to them, and I think that's at the core of this, this purpose statement.
Thank you. Anything else on the purpose statement? Hearing none, we will move on to the definitions. Let's actually look to see if anybody wants to say anything. Okay, then how about privacy?
I do have.
Okay, Director Barlow.
Under item E, third line down, it says, "District staff should work closely with the student, parent, guardian, and other staff members on a plan to inform and educate the student's peers, and shall document the plan." And I understand that's within the context of the fact that some transgender or gender expansive students may feel more supported if they're, if other students were aware of their situation. We do have culture clubs, correct? And they probably have a parent or teacher advisor, is that correct as well? An advisor, some sort?
Certainly staff, yeah.
Okay. And if, if the goal is to create, well, what's the goal here? Is it to create awareness, support? Because I don't believe this is simply unique to transgender or gender expansive students, okay? And I'm not aware that we have other policies that are as clear in communicating the care that is being demonstrated here and the compassion. For instance, I, I have a grandson enrolled in RPS who's on the spectrum. I'm not aware that his peers are necessarily made aware of and/or invited to show support for, though I am aware of the great support that our educational support professionals provide and, and staff as well. And so I guess I'm just trying to understand what we're trying to do as a district and trying to, and when I use this term normalize, are we moving from what has been historically viewed as normal to a new normal? I think your opening statement alluded to, we are living at times much different now than previously before. And, and so I, I, of course, want to be respectful and supportive of all students, and I'm somewhat just thrown by the fact that this high level of effort is being expended, which will result in significant accommodations were asked for, will be provided, and probably most important, and I don't want to get ahead of the flow of how things are laid out within the procedure, but as a Christian pastor, I have received a number of phone calls and been a part of a number of conversations where the, the shared belief or view is that people are being asked to forego what they have believed, accepted, and have known to be true based on medical fact, and to forego that in light of what a student may sense. I think when we looked at the definitions, that was the key word. If a student senses that they are this or that, then they must be supported. And I, I'm, I just want to officially communicate the fact that while we have had public testimony, which has occurred over the last couple of months, where parents have, I'm not saying anything new, we have each heard it before, and certainly as a Christian pastor, I also believe in, you know, the male, female, okay? And, but I also recognize that what I believe does not shape policy, and even if I strongly inhale to, to the core, that is my belief, the Board operates on a majority, not on what one thinks, feels, and/or believes. But I do think it is important to at least express that, because in the same way that we are acknowledging the reality of the times, and they have changed, we must also, I think, acknowledge the reality of things that have not changed, and that by implementing this procedure, we are basically saying what a significant portion of the community believes and/or accepts as truth and/or what is normal is being ignored, not considered, overlooked. And so I'm curious, Mick, if the law ever delved into this aspect, or if there have been instances of where faith was factored in or out, or if that were ever raised to the level of it's a non-issue or it's something which should be considered.
Well, many courts have considered what are known as privacy claims, where parents assert that for a variety of reasons, including religious reasons, that allowing transgender individuals to use locker room and restroom facilities violates their privacy rights. And all of those lawsuits have been rejected, and the rights of the transgender students have been found to be greater than any rights along lines of privacy or religion. And to keep in mind, the way the courts have ruled in terms of the rights of transgender students, really, there, there are three keys here. One, there's state law, which we have, Minnesota, very clear law. Two, there's a federal law, Title IX. Two, there's a federal law, uh, Title IX, which you're quite familiar with. And three, there's the U.S. Constitution and the equal protection clause. And the majority of the federal courts that have considered this have found that transgender students have an equal protection right under the U.S. Constitution. And so that, to this point in time, Director, has been the way that the courts have looked at it, that those rights exceed, if you will, any rights individual accommodation for sincerely held religious beliefs. And, um, again, I, I recognize that people have a lot of personal views and strong feelings. And part of that comes from the fact that we've seen some pretty rapid change in the law in this area compared to the way that the law usually works. However, the law is clear at this point in time, and so, uh, personal views are not. And really, the policy or the procedures are meant to implement the law.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Director Marvin. Director Barlow, I appreciate your, um, your statements there. I'm, I'm coming at it from a different perspective, though.
Can you move the microphone closer to the next one?
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm coming at this from a different perspective, and that is, what is normal? When I was in elementary school, if you were left-handed, that was weird. And they tried to teach you how to be right-handed, because most people were right-handed. Before that, if you had, uh, learning disabilities, you couldn't, couldn't learn to read, you were considered real, really abnormal, because kids should be able to read when they're in elementary school. Now we know of special education. It was weird if you were, had green eyes. Um, it wasn't normal. And I want to believe that we have come a long way since then in accepting the fact that people are different, that kids are different, and that doesn't make them any less human and any less deserving of respect and a joyful childhood and a wonderful education. I don't know that this procedure is going to change anybody's beliefs in terms of what their faith is. But it should change the way that all of us understand. We are expected to treat every single child, including and especially if there is even a very small minority of kids. The way we, we are required to treat them, and I hope that we learn that we should treat them, is with the kind of respect and with the kind of accommodations that they deserve, so that they can enjoy the same joy that every other child can. This isn't new. I mean, I, I started teaching 50 years ago, and I, we had LGBTQ kids then. I was the advisor for the Gay Straight Alliance, GSA, they used to have at every high school. And it was wonderful, because the kids who identified as being straight got it that every kid, regardless of their gender identity, had a place in that building and deserved to be there. And that they may not understand them, but they accepted, respected that these kids deserved the same chances, the same opportunities, the same experience that everybody else did. So I see this simply as a way that our school district and our state, our nation, I think, is getting better in saying, it doesn't matter if it's a few or a whole bunch, um, nobody should be discriminated against. And we all know that kids who identify as transgender or gender fluid or some, someplace else in the LGBTQ community, um, they have an inordinate, they experience way beyond what they should, bullying and depression and suicide attempts. They're kids, and they deserve the right to grow up to be who they are. And I guess in my faith tradition, we just say judge, not lest you be judged, not our job to judge, or maybe even to understand. But it is our job to do everything we can to ensure that these kids, at school at least, are safe. So for me, it's, it's a no-brainer.
I offer some comments from the school perspective.
Please.
Oh, sorry.
Eight years ago, when I assumed the role of principal at Friddell Middle School, I feel I was given the gift of understanding. The summer before the school year started, I had staff members and students come to me and ask would I support, um, LGBTQ club at Friddell? And I said yes. I had a few staff members say, "You shouldn't do that, because people aren't going to like it. You might get people who don't agree. It could draw attention to our building." Other element, other, other middle schools had clubs. We had a number of kids who wanted to participate in the club, and a staff member who wanted to, um, provide the support for the, for the club. I learned a lot from the kids at Friddell that I, I served, um, who were struggling to come to school because they were unable to use a restroom that they felt comfortable in, that they felt forced to change for Thiad in a locker room, um, in a space they didn't identify with. And I, without guidance, but very carefully, supported the needs of each of those kids. And it was, I will say, three or four, I can't quite remember exactly. It was a handful. And I couldn't have lived with myself if I knew those kids were coming to school every day so uncomfortable they couldn't participate. And, um, I think our staff have been doing what's right for kids without guidance, but with care and providing, uh, a, a comfortable place for kids to be. I, um, think that the LGBTQ club that I got to know, uh, the kids I got to know at Friddell sought to educate their peers, not to change their minds, not to indoctrinate, but to educate and seek compassion. And, um, I, that year for me at Friddell was a, a gift that I carry with me all the time, of knowing kids who were not doing something to call attention to themselves or be different, but, but sought to feel comfortable just like any other kid at school.
Director Cook?
Uh, thank you for that perspective, Ms. Peterson, and Director Barlow. Not for the first time, I, I am so pleased to have your perspective on this board, and I, I value your, uh, your insights a great deal. And I, I never have any doubt whatsoever that your, uh, perspective is tuned very much towards what is best for children. And I'm so glad I took a moment to reflect, uh, because I do think that the, the item that you raised, um, is an important one and one that this board should reflect on, on whether explicitly in procedure, identifying as an example, one way to create a supportive environment might include, um, members of the staff working to inform and educate students' peers. I think that's, that's the type of item that, um, some would view as having the potential for indoctrination. Or, or you used the word, uh, normalizing. And I'm glad that I reflected on that, because my students attend Jefferson, where neurodiversity is very much celebrated. The, there are a number of autism classrooms there, and there are weeks during the school year where every student in the building has an opportunity to become educated on what autism, um, is and what the students with, uh, that are part of those autism classrooms experience, how things are different for them. I also, um, have students with specific learning disabilities, and they have been very skillfully supported in their classrooms to have those differences explained to their peers in a way that was transformatively supportive. And so I do think that this is a, I, I don't think there's anything that I'm reading here that, that dictates a captive audience has given a specific lesson on any particular ideology. But I do think that this is a powerful way for students to be supportive and to create an inclusive environment. And that it, to your other point, ought to be the model for the way that we support students in, um, from a neurodiversity background or a, uh, learning diversity background, really all, all manners of diversity. Because what we gain as a school community, as a society, by accepting and being inclusive, is all of the potential of those kids that are no longer ostracized, that feel that they have a place and that they aren't, you know, I mean, the upside is so great here, um, that I, uh, I just, I really think it's, I, I think this is in the right lane. I think it's the model going forward for all forms of diversity, and I'm, I'm glad that you raised it very specifically.
And Madam Chair, if I just may offer a clarifying statement?
Okay.
Certainly, Dr. Marvin, um, all students are of great value. I am not intimating on any level, nor did you suggest that I was. I, I just want to be sure that everyone is clear in the purpose of my comments. It was not to suggest that some students, um, are undeserving of the highest level of educational services that seemingly is being called out and procedurally stated. That's what I was really speaking to, that this should be the model. And, uh, maybe unbeknownst to me, is the model. But I can say that, uh, even as recently with the, uh, bridge incident with the youth forum, we heard voices of students of color say they don't necessarily feel a part of the... And, and so I, I raise it for that reason to say, while there are some good elements associated with this procedure, let's not only allow it to exist for transgender, gender expansive students, but let's expand it and make it our practice for all students.
Before we move on to the next section, Director Barlow, thank you for, um, bringing the perspective of our, uh, community into the conversation. I think in, um, responding to both your comments on the, um, purpose section and in, in this section, we also heard from members of the community who were, um, allies or parents or family members of transgender and gender expansive students, who spoke in favor of needing this kind of guidance explicitly to address the needs of their students. And in terms of the information, um, that's out there about students, the introduction to the Title IX final rule states simply and clearly, "Many LGBTQI+ students face bullying and harassment just because of who they are." And that sentence is backed by research and data and studies and anecdotes that support some of the, the things that we've heard from other people. And that's why it was felt by many people that they needed to advocate for a law, meaning changes to the Title IX rules, to codify the kinds of supports that are best, based on best practices for serving the LGBTQ students in our schools. So I just wanted to bring to the table the perspective that we've heard from individuals and other sources of information, that this is rooted in students being harmed and uncomfortable. And I, I really like the way you put it, Director Cook. They're not able to be their best selves, their best members of our communities, and their best contributors to, um, being part of our learning community. And for me, um, when the question's asked, "Why are we doing this?", it's because we have a history and we have data, whether it's here or whether it's elsewhere, that has led to people to develop these, uh, state and federal laws that we're doing our best to implement, um, based on the structure of our communities, the relationships that we have in our schools, and the skills of our staff. So I just wanted to make sure that was in the conversation. Any other comments on privacy? Director McLaughlin?
I have one. I'm kind of reflecting on what everyone's saying here and also did some, a little bit digger deeping into the changes to Title IX, because that seemed what precipitated, um, this change, you know, this addition to our procedure. And I first want to point out that I think, Dr., or Director Barlow, that a lot of the concerns, and it's not something that, I think our agenda item gives us quotes from the various different policies that we're looking at here, but they are all cross-referenced at the end of this procedure. Honestly, I didn't read them all in detail, but I think if we look at those collectively, the whole point of, I think personally, this discussion, and I hope that it, it, it corresponds with what everyone else is naming me as well, is that looking at Title IX talks about, and the deep dive went into a fact sheet that, that I was able to access, that the promise of Title IX, "An education free from sex discrimination," remains as vital now as it was when it was first signed into law. I look at that from the school district perspective. It's not just sex discrimination, it's all forms of discrimination. And I believe that all of these policies that are cross-referenced at the bottom of this document in various ways address all forms of discrimination. And the goal here is to eliminate that discrimination in all forms so that our students, all of our students can feel safe in their school environment. Regardless of what people's personal beliefs may be, we want them to be safe. We want them to feel empowered, that their parents are empowered, to address the situation. The other thing about these, the fact sheet that I found particularly interesting and really helped me support, um, the language in this procedure is it talks about the Department of Education. The reason this took so much time to put together is that the department received and reviewed more than 240,000 comments from the public to inform this rulemaking. And I would expect that those comments relate to all types of concerns in terms of parent privacy, religious convictions, religious beliefs, all kinds of topics. On all aspects of the spectrum of public comment, I would expect that that would, that's why there were 240,000 of them. And that the Department of Education in putting through the guidance about how to create a procedure like we did here, incorporated all of those thoughts and came to the conclusion, based on what our legal counsel is telling us, it's the state of our state law, our federal law, and our U.S. Constitution to, um, to do what we're doing here and having this discussion here, and, um, ideally adopting a policy that's going to meet the needs of all of our students.
Director McLaughlin, that 240,000 comments was reflected in the 1,500 pages of the final rule, where they took and broke down every section with every type of comment and had a discussion of the comments and then a formal response as to whether it changed or did not change the final rule. So if you really want to read 1,500 pages.
I probably will.
It's all in. All right, anything else on the privacy section? All right, let's move on to section four, parent access to information.
Hearing none?
Uh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Director Cook.
I do, I gave this, uh, particular section careful thought. And I, I do feel strongly that, uh, parents should always have access to information about their children. I don't ever want to see the school district get into a situation where, um, for one reason or another, acts in a court order, as the procedure identifies, information about a parent's children was not made available to them. At the same time, I spend a lot of time implementing policy in a corporate environment, and I'm sensitive to the ramifications of, uh, policy and procedure choices. And, um, to echo Dr. Bacall, your introductory remarks, the way that I was thinking about this very early on was, well, what other types of instances? You think about report cards, um, and beyond that, we're pretty much, I don't know, maybe there are some, like, random regulatory things, but, um, we're pretty much relying on the discretion and the professional judgment and the sensitivity of our educators and our administrators to keep parents informed about issues that arise throughout the school day. And I certainly get those messages all the time, whether it's by email or phone calls home or, um, through the app about, you know, such and such happened during the day, thought you should know, want to follow up. But I don't think, because I'm sensitive to how this would be implemented, this would be the one exception where we would instead create some kind of a mandatory reporting event where, oh, I thought I heard a different pronoun than before, let's, like, flag this and make it into a big thing, because that's the exact, that will lead to the precise type of stigmatization that we're trying to avoid. So I, I think this is just the right balance, and I'm pleased to see it.
Director.
Um, I, I appreciate that. And Director Cook, just since you used the term mandatory reporting, mandatory reporting does exist, but it doesn't go to the parent, it goes to law enforcement if we think there is, um, abuse. And so our staff do take mandatory reporting very seriously. This is exactly aligned with what you're saying, but it, it is mandatory reporting to law enforcement or to child welfare, um, or both. And, and so, uh, but it doesn't exist in this direct sense, but, but we, we believe in parent engagement. We also know there are people who have, have concerns about that, and, and there's a tension here. The procedure clearly puts its marker down in the way you just described it, but, but we also know we have professional development and capacity building to do to be sure that that is done, uh, carefully and appropriately. And following the board's action on this procedure, we, as I mentioned, would turn to that, uh, task.
Director McLaughlin? And I want to tag on that because, as I was thinking about this, particularly the, the parent information, parent access to information, it also reminded me about the mandatory reporting laws, because that is something I have experience with in my prior life. Uh, where I hope the training would go is, you're correct, that reporting to law enforcement, reporting to child protection, that's the mandatory report. But I would hope the training would also, in a couple ways, include something that I'm hoping is already, and, and our educators are, and staff are trained in doing this already, is having a conversation with the young person in the mandatory reporter context already, we're going to need to tell your parents. And, and that ties in here, that I'm hoping that the education that we can provide to our staff then would be the second piece of, if we need to tell parents something about these conversations, that's not the first time the child is learning about it, that that's part of that relationship building and that confidentiality. And this is confidential, this isn't, this is how this works, is something that, um, a staff person would have experience in the, the mandatory reporter world, can apply those same skills and that same sensitivity to this conversation. I just worry about a student learning that for the first time right before that parent notice, and I would also hope that it includes. How I think about it is, um, staff person, student, parent, all sitting down together and having that conversation.
Yeah, Director McLaughlin, I appreciate that. And to Director Barlow's point earlier about other, other types of difference, as I have talked to our counselor, social workers, administrators about the issue of kids and parents, what you just described is almost always how they approach the circumstance. How can we tell your parent? How can we do that? And especially, our veterans are very skillful at that, because they help the student get to that point, um, not just in the area of gender identity, but across many forms of difference. It's a skill they learn quickly, um, because often they are that bridge.
Director. So, you want to hand me the?
Of course.
Oh, okay.
I, I think I absolutely know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So, um, I think in Rochester Public Schools, we have instances where, um, there might be custody issues of a child and who gets to pick their child up after school, which could very well be court ordered. So the district is already in the habit of informing teachers who work with this child what that court order is, so that they don't violate it. So if there were a court order, which is referenced here, that would deny access to the data, those teachers would have that information as well as any other court orders that you might more routinely deal with.
Yes, Director Workman, that is a very formalized process, as I know you know from your ears in the classroom. The administrator has the direct responsibility to inform a clearly identified set of staff about the court order and to, uh, ensure that any new staff who are interacting are updated. And so it's a very clear procedure. Unfortunately, we deal with it fairly regularly, um, and so it's something that, uh, we're unfortunately good at, because it's a difficult situation, of course, for a kid to be in. Uh, but we would be applying, should the board approve this procedure, those same processes to, uh, to this issue that we, that we have with parental custody and, and related issues.
Director Barlow?
I appreciate, uh, part of your opening, uh, comments, Dr. Pikel, where you, uh, clarified that, uh, staff, uh, indeed, would have opportunity, as they currently do, to inform parents of, uh, concerns relative to the safety, well-being, and educational progress of their, uh, child or student, uh, because that was something which, as we all have sat through, heard, um, uh, many believed the opposite, and I'm, I'm glad we're able to clearly communicate now, at this point, that, um, uh, school personnel will have the opportunity to communicate, uh, to parents. I was curious, however, though, if the concern is a, is parent notification worthy, I note that, uh, the procedure offers the exception if the student is 18 years of age or older. Uh, I realize that may be a factor associated with, are they, is a student considered an adult at age 18 as relates to this, but not to drinking?
Yes.
Okay.
And Director Barlow, if you talk to our wonderful high school students, uh, in Rochester, they are very aware of that tension. They, they can also go, uh, fight in a war and can't legally have alcohol. So yes, that's a, that's directly related. I, I'll just also say, Director Barlow, I appreciate you, uh, catching my comment earlier. This was also true of the administrative guidelines I issued last year. It was a point that, um, meaning that staff could inform parents. Um, it, it was a point I'm glad to have the opportunity now to make, uh, more publicly and reassure, that that had, that was true in those guidelines, that remains true. They did not prohibit it, and these, this draft procedure that's before you does not.
Anything else on this section? All right, let's move on to section five, names, pronouns, gender markers, and district records. Any comments or questions? If I can give a little update. Um, so, uh, Jack Peterson and Melissa Getch and I from, um, Registration and Records, um, have been developing what I think is going to be an attachment to this procedure that will, um, document the actual process, for example, um, in section five E, where parents and guardians have a right to request that the student change the name, gender identity, and pronouns in our school's, um, student information system, which is Skyward. Um, we've gotten some questions from, um, parents, um, who want to ensure that their student is being referred to appropriately in the, in the classroom with their name and their gender identity and pronouns. And so we went through the internal, um, filling out the form procedures, then where does the form go to, then how is the change made online, then where communication of the change goes to, and then what documents that affects in our system, um, official records versus what we're referring to as all other school records. So we've got a draft of that that we just finished today, and that will be part of the final, um, procedure that you'll get a chance to review. Oh, Director McLaughlin?
Um, I have one comment from the community that raised a question about, um, a term that I think is used in, I just quickly looked here, three different, it's not a term, it's a phrase, three different places in this section. And it's, the first place it is seen is in, um, section A, where it references in the second line, pronouns that correspond to the student's gender identity. It was pointed out to me that that might not be the most sensitive way to phrase that content, in and of, because pronouns don't necessarily correspond with a student's gender identity. A better way to say it may be pronouns that the student requests. And it's in section A, it's in section E, and it's in section G. Those are the three places I quickly found it. It may be elsewhere in the document, but that's where I found it, in the section.
A, E, and G?
Yep.
Okay.
A, E, and G. I mean, I'm not sure if, if, I guess my question would be, is, was there a specific reason it was worded that way, or is that open to conversation?
It was part of the original guidance. Um, yeah, go ahead.
The origin of it, Director McLaughlin, when we did the guidance, was to make clear that staff need to use the pronouns that reflect the gender identity the student is expressing. Um, and so the intent was to say you can't not use the pronouns. Um, I know from my own students, uh, my own kids who are college students, that there are peers of theirs who have chosen pronouns that are not he, she. They're, they're, you know, they're neutral. So I, you're right, the language in some ways would not allow for breaking from gender-based pronouns, uh, in general, so certainly I think the policy committee could take a look at that. The logic was, if, if, if someone says I'm he, then he/him, then you use he/him. But, uh, you're right, that wouldn't preclude for a student asking for an alternative, which I haven't necessarily heard has happened in RPS, but I know that is a, it's a thing, um, out there.
And I would think maybe we want to look at, at pronouns that correspond to the, to what this, the student is expressing and requests.
Okay, certainly could take a look at that thing.
Um, and, and I, I like the idea of having a procedure here that won't need future changes as future changes in our world happen, and that this is one way we can accomplish it.
Director Workman?
So, since we have our legal counsel up here near the ceiling in the corner, um, do you have anything you'd like to say about Director McLaughlin's point, and if that is something that you think the policy committee should address in this document?
I think you can certainly use just the phrase preferred pronouns to address that concern.
It also looks like it's in item D, as in dog.
Okay. And perhaps it's the, um, you've been, when we talked about the, the details, we've been using that word preferred, um, to distinguish from legal, um, so that might be a way to refer to it in all places, to have more extensive use of the word preferred. Director Marvin?
Thank you. And I, I know that the issue of pronouns has gotten to be a really big issue. And I hope that the community recognizes that teachers don't spend most of their class time talking to kids about pronouns and about names. They, they teach stuff, and very seldom when a teacher is speaking to another kid, to a kid, will, will the teacher use that kid's pronouns? I mean, you would be Dr. Pikel, not they, them, or he, whatever. Um, the name thing is nothing new. We've been asking kids at first day of school forever, you have a nickname you want me to call you? And you write it down, and then if they say Baba or whatever, some kids change their names twice a year. Kids now may change their pronouns every year. It, you know, they're on a journey to discover who they are. But this is not how people, how teachers spend their time in the classrooms. Our gender-affirming care is, let me know what pronouns you want, which is what increasingly a big number of organizations and companies do for all their employees. What are your preferred pronouns? I don't know if they ask them what nickname you want. But this is what the world is doing, and it doesn't seem to affect the kids in the class at all. One way, it doesn't take anything away from anybody else's learning experience to have kids say this is what my preferred pronouns are.
Any other comments on section five?
No. I'll just say, when Mick comes up with a way to express something in two words, you realize that I need to strive for his level of brevity. As anyone who's read one of my emails knows, I, I, that's impressive, Mick. I'm aiming to, uh, I, if, if two words will do, I find eight, so.
Also impressive from an attorney's perspective.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the next section is, is section six, gender segregated facilities. Questions or comments on this? The key change from the, um, the guidance document is simply to cite the Minnesota statute and, um, court finding that drives, um, these requirements in our schools. And then, um, to add a section at the end specifically to call out, um, while it was in the guidance, we wanted to have a specific section for those students or parent guardians who were concerned about, um, this area of our procedure, and then how they could address their concerns with building administration.
Um, Madam Chair, um, just to clarify, so, under six, um, B1, uh, the language is any student who has a need or desire for increased privacy, does any student actually mean any student? Or again, is this specific to transgender or gender-affirming students?
Attorney?
Uh, no, Director Barlow, you've read it, that is intended to be any student. So, uh, as I mentioned, a student whose parent had some, a concern, um, could request that alternative under that part of the policy, a separate changing space, for instance.
But now you raise a, if parents are unaware and the student themselves request, uh, are, it, can you clarify the statement?
Uh, it's, it's a great point. I, I was thinking about parents based on our earlier conversation, but the direct reading here is that the student, uh, could request it, and parental involvement wouldn't be required to find an alternative changing space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing more in this section? Okay. Oh, sorry, Director McLaughlin?
I guess I'd just sort of like to make, um, a comment with some of the experiences or, um, comments from students and parents when our new schools were built and we had the individual floor-to-ceiling stalls. And there were a lot of middle school girls who said, we are so happy to see this. You know, they felt they could have the privacy that they needed. So, you know, I think that in this section, that B1 very clearly states any student who has a need or desire for increased, uh, privacy. I mean, there have been horror stories to us now about how, um, students back in the days when they were showering in gym class had to be inspected by the teacher to make sure that you had gotten wet all over. And I can't imagine such a thing happening in, in today's world. I mean, and there were, let me tell you, a whole lot of kids who were really, really uncomfortable with that, but that was the norm for the time. And I thank God it's not the norm now.
It is definitely not.
All right. Uh, section seven, gender segregated activities, classes, rules, policies, and practices. Any comments on that section? Any comments on that section? Section 8, Dress Codes. Section 9, School Trips. Section 10, Intramural Sports, Extracurricular Activities, and Interscholastic Sports Teams and Activities. Section 11, Compliance. Section 12, Discrimination, Harassment, and Bully. Any other closing questions, comments?
I do have a question, Madam Chair. This is, at this point, scheduled to be presented as an action item during the July 16th Board meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Will there be any opportunity for the public prior to that to offer comment and/or input?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, because that's always going to wrap us up. So, with all of our policies and procedures, the members of the community can email us or call board members with their comments. And we do have two comment-to-the-board periods coming up at our two upcoming regular meetings. That would be the June 18th meeting and July 16th meeting, that members of the public could sign up to give their feedback. Thank you very much, board members, superintendent, and thanks for giving me the time to write down all your notes.
Thank you, Mick.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a focus topic, Item 4.1, Literacy Update. Superintendent Fakel?
Thank you. Let me invite our folks who are going to be presenting on literacy to come on down and take a seat. Please fill in. We're gonna, as you've seen, we're all getting, Ms. Sam is getting her exercise, moving the mic around here. Not that she needs it, I do. But, we will ask you to come. I know that we are a somewhat larger group, but, Madam Chair. I think in the interest of talking, Madam Chair, I'm just gonna, I know you know these folks well, but I'll just make sure I ask folks to identify themselves as they get to their point in the presentation, just so that we're all sure, people know who they are. As board members are very well aware, we are embarked on an ambitious strategy to strengthen the reading skills of our students from early childhood through, actually, post-secondary education. And that is a complex effort that the state of Minnesota is also engaged in. And so, school districts are required to submit a much more detailed literacy plan with a much more prescribed format than was the case in the past. And as I talked with the Executive Committee, this plan does not require board approval in this instance, but we thought that given this board's keen interest in the literacy work, we would schedule an update for you concurrent with our submission of the plan, which is due at the state on June 15th. We also have another update for you in the fall on our literacy work, so as you know, this will be an ongoing subject. We did not, we will not, in this presentation, attempt to cover the waterfront and be encyclopedic. So, for instance, this board recently heard from Erica Schumacher on our literacy work with early childhood, and Natalia Benjamin on our literacy work with multi-language learning. Neither, I didn't ask Erica or Natalia to be here, and their work is mentioned in the plan, but we're not going to dig back into it tonight, because you recently had the chance to dialogue with both of those key leaders. So, we're looking forward to giving you an overview. I did, there's a ton of information in this PowerPoint. I know we have a board that reads, and so I did ask the team to move at a fairly good clip so that we have time for questions, should you have some, and I'm sure you will. So, looks like Heather Wilman, our director-
I've got the clicker.
Has the clicker, so you have the power. Let's make sure we give you one of these mics so that you're really fully audible. So, I will do that.
All right, so, good evening. I'm Peter Rock, Director of Research and Improvement here for Rochester Public Schools. I have the first two slides of our presentation tonight about our FastBridge data from grades K through 12. Up on the screen here, you see our A-Reading screener results from this school year, grades 2 through 12. A-Reading is given to all students in those grades three times a year. On the left side of the screen, you see colored bar chart with a black line through it. The black line represents, above that line, students in the low-risk and on-track categories, which meets the definition of grade level. And below that black line, you have pink and red blocks, which represent students in the some-risk or high-risk categories. On the right side of the screen is more of a rainbow-colored chart, and that shows the amount of growth over the course of the year. Red represents flat growth, yellow is modest, green is typical, and blue is aggressive. The reason it's important to continue to consider both side by side is a student may have plenty of growth during the year, but still stay within the same risk category. That's still a win for that student for the year, they experienced a tremendous amount of growth, but it may not necessarily be reflected in the two-color bar chart with the black line through it. For grades K and 1, it's a different assessment within the FastBridge platform called early reading. The difference is, early reading is done paper and pencil, one-on-one with a teacher or an ESP, whereas A-Reading is done on a device. The color breakdowns are the same here. You see the black line showing students above in the low-risk category, on-track is not a term used in that assessment. And then you see the same growth chart to the side. These are fairly representative of all of our schools' experiences across the board this year. There were, of course, with 27 schools, you have some variability between sites, but this represents a pretty standard distribution of data across our district for the last year.
Director, can you go through those colors again, just to-
Sure. So, the purple colors on the top, with A-Reading, there's two colors. On this slide, there's only one purple color. That's low-risk and on-track, which meets the definition of at-grade level. On-track is a little bit of a unfortunately misleading term. Students that are in the low-risk category are also considered at grade level. Below the black line is some-risk and high-risk. And those are students that FastBridge has identified some sort of significant gap in their skills that would need addressing in order to help that student get their reading skills up to what we would expect for grade level.
And then, can you do the colors on the other one, too?
Sure. So, red is flat growth, means the student actually still grew over the course of the year, but not at a rate that we would necessarily want or expect based on the instruction. Orange is some growth, just below what we would hope for. Green is typical. That student grew with the instruction in the way that we would expect over the course of the year. And blue is aggressive, meaning they actually exceeded what we would have expected based on the instruction over the course of the year.
I'm Melissa Stankin, the Director of Special Education. I support children, families, and staff, birth through 5th grade, elementary. We presented last year and talked about our work, and tonight I'd like to talk to you about year four, where we are with this process as well, with our work in literacy. So, in the fall, we met with the sites, our special education instructional coaches, to take a look at how our strategic plan in literacy, and how that is aligning with the site and their skip goals. We know that all sites were focused on that work, and so, we dedicated our work with the principals. They joined us. We are in year two of using a specific curriculum for students with disabilities that have a reading goal. Many principals joined and learned more about it, so they did systematic observations and learned about how we are doing explicitly-designed instruction for students with disabilities. Our teams then really started to problem-solve, what about students with flat and modest growth? And how do we continue progress monitoring for students that are in that risk or high-risk category? So, the next slide is an example of a problem-solving guide that they had. This comes directly out of our FastBridge Problem-Solving Facilitators Guide, and so many sites use this. And I snipped this as an example, so that you could see a teacher that brought it to. This is an example of how they brought it to their PLC. And so, this particular teacher said, we are really, our problem identification on the left is that we have students that have trouble with blending. They are coming, the problem analysis is that they can actually do the CVC words, but when it comes to four sounds, it really throws them off. The blending throws them off.
Can you use five blending?
Sure, we're gonna get there. We're gonna get there. So, one of the things that they talked about was with the plan development, is that how are we going to put blend or put these sounds together, and how are we going to explicitly teach that for students? That chart on the bottom is difficult to read, but it states cumulative blending. So, in this particular case, they had two ideas. We're talking about phonemic awareness, putting those sounds and then the letters together. How do we combine that? And then the second part is, this is an example of cumulative blending. So, if you see the first, the first word, it's really difficult to see, is the word can eventually on the bottom. So, it starts with c, then the second part would be k, eh, ca. And the third part would be k, eh, n, can. And that's how the students are practicing that. They did the same thing on the bottom example, too. F, eh, fa. F, eh, n, fan. And they got that. What we were seeing at the beginning was that the students could identify all of the sounds individually, so if they had a four-sound word, such as cast, k, ast, it would say cats, or stat. So, they couldn't put it together. So, this helped them to really break it down and do what's called that cumulative blending. So, Amanda, the teacher, said, okay, I'm really gonna try that cumulative blending. I think this is gonna help us to break it down into practice. So, on the right-hand side, or that light blue, that's when the teachers would go back, they would practice, and then they would come back into their PLC with other teachers to report back on either a specific small group of students or a particular student. So, sites really then determined, how are they gonna do that problem solving? So, that was one of the actions. She came back and said, it helps. We saw success with the entire group when it came to, when it came to the four sounds, when they were working on that. So, that was a strategy, an example of how the PLCs were working at the site level.
Melissa, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When the cumulative blending is being implemented in the classroom, is that a whole classroom exercise, is it a small-group exercise, is it one-on-one?
It's a great question. So, it depends. In a special education classroom, we can have small groups as small as two, and they can have groups as large as six. So, there might be some independent work that's happening, and with the progress monitoring that's occurring, if all of the other students have gotten that skill, they could be practicing with an ESP, they could be practicing one-on-one with their special education teacher at that time. It really just depends if, it's kind of like that tier one, right? If we have all of the students that are missing, or most of the students that are missing, and it's a whole group instruction. So, that's where they would do that progress monitoring to determine who requires that level, right? Thanks. You're welcome. So, as we took a look at our year, and again, this is our summary, we engaged this year in some ESP or paraprofessional training in the science of reading. We did that twice this year. We had many people that were taking advantage, as they grow their confidence and understanding how to use the curriculum and experience this explicitly-designed instruction, they're going to say, I want to observe my peer. Year one, they really didn't want anyone to come in, because they were a little unsure. And now we're seeing their confidence grow, and them saying, I want to observe you, do you want to observe me? And so, that's really great for teachers to increase their confidence at that level. And we did have a special education literacy leadership team that continued this year in full, in full force. And now they're looking at, boy, as we use a curriculum, we don't just want to rely on that, but what else do we need in writing was a big thing, so they created some handsets for the entire elementary, all the elementary teams to use this year. And then we experienced some literacy nights, where we brought families in to learn some of these strategies that I just shared with you, and how they could use that. We also did it with our incoming kindergarten families, students with disabilities, so the families could come in, and, you know, getting into kindergarten is a big deal. So, and everybody's talking about literacy right now, so it was a really nice time for families to come in and even ask questions about what does kindergarten look like. We do love our time with our families, so we experienced literacy those evenings. Again, this year, we took a look at FastBridge, as Peter talked about before, but this FastBridge data is specific to students that are from fall to spring that took FastBridge, and they had a goal on their IEP that was specific to literacy. So, those with aggressive growth were 37 percent, typical growth 17 percent, modest growth 19, and flat growth 27. As we look toward that 25, the 24, 25 school year, we will continue to monitor that growth, but we really want to take a look at how are we getting all of our students into that top half of typical and aggressive in order to close that gap. And now, what comes next? We know, as Dr. Fakel stated, that we are all in this work together with ReadACT, early childhood, and early childhood SLPs, and we even offered it to some of our ESPs, because our grant money allowed that for the summer for early childhood, which Erica talked about. And that's where we are right now, is just getting everyone else on board.
Thanks, Melissa. I'm Nicole Miller, and I am the Special Education Director for our secondary schools. And as Melissa said, where are we headed next? Well, with the Phase 1 being due by July 1st of 2025, all of our special education teachers at elementary and secondary are currently being trained in court and will be trained by the end of September. So, secondary special education is really just beginning our journey in literacy with the training that's being done right now. Our plan then is that during the 24, 25 school year, we will conduct and convene a curriculum task force to take a look at materials that would be appropriate for our students with disabilities within literacy.
All right. So, I'm Heather Wilman. I'm the Director of Secondary Academics. I get to tell you a little bit about middle-school and high-school students. Some people call this the forgotten conversation, because as you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about K through 5. And then, I think as we've been here earlier, we've talked to you about how we know we have a lot of growth to make in middle-school and high-school. So, I'm happy to report that next year, at all of our middle schools, we'll have either success coaches or an interventionist working with students who need tailored, more diagnostic support. So, as a student, that might look like, I have that FastBridge intervention screening. It tells me that I might need some more support, and then that teacher might use some diagnostics to figure out, what else does that student need? And then they'll have either small-group or individualized support. So, that will be at all of our comprehensive middle schools. We've had that happening, but not at all of the middle schools, and next year that will be in place. At high school, we've talked to you a little bit about some various models. One thing that we have seen success with at Century is students having a study hall, and then getting that targeted reading support. So, instead of being in study hall, they go and work with a teacher who has English training and also reading training, or reading license. So, we've seen really good gains for those students in both fluency and comprehension, but we want to be able to expand that to more students, because we know there are more students that have that need than are getting support. So, that's something we'll be working on next year for secondary students. And then Nicole's gonna talk a little bit about co-teaching.
Yeah. So, the Office of Academics is working really hard to increase our collaboration between general education, ML, and special education, and one way that we can do this is through the co-teaching model. Co-teaching partners are currently getting training in the models of co-teaching, in best practices for instructional strategies, and then, of course, planning time together. And to kind of give an idea, in special education at the secondary, we have approximately 40 co-teaching partnerships that will be happening for this upcoming year, so we're really excited about that. So, in this slide, these are the six different co-teaching partnerships that we provide training to our staff on. And in a classroom, I'm just gonna give you a couple examples of what this might look like. So, you might see a general education teacher delivering the content, and then a special education teacher supporting with things like organization or learning strategies, and that would be an example of one-Teach-One-Assist. Whereas, in a station teaching model, you might see each teacher has a particular station, and then they provide direct instruction with an independent station. And in that particular model, the co-teachers really can support an MTSS system, because they're re-teaching, they're pre-teaching, or they are enhancing the lesson.
All right. The last thing that we wanted to talk about with the older readers, and you've heard, seen this kind- The last thing that we wanted to talk about with the older readers, and you've heard, seen this kind of on our docket, is we wanted to create literacy resource maps so that our teachers didn't have to figure out how to find all the resources themselves. And then we really wanted them to know that um the resources they were using were evidence-based and vetted. So we worked on a map for each of the five pillars of reading and we'll roll those out in the fall. And we wanted to show you what they look like. Um, so as a teacher, you'll be able to click into each of those pillars if you need it. And then, once you get in, I just kind of took a snip of the fluency one. Um, you can see what's the skill, why would we work on this? Um, what are the sub-skills underneath that, that main skill? What are some assessments that I could use to find out more information about that reader? And then what are the strategies that I could use? So we feel like this is going to be very helpful for our teachers so that they don't have to try and figure out, is this worthwhile? Um, we wanted to make sure that, that we spend some really good time thinking about these maps. So we had Natalia um from the multi-language learner um aspect. We had our special education coaches, um, we had our humanities, uh, and our science specialist, and then myself, and um just a really good collaboration in trying to make this simple, um, but also usable. It did take us almost a year to get to this place and we had many, many meetings where we had way too much information. And I think we've gotten to a good place now, but we'll field test it and find out um how useful it is to the teachers and the students.
And I'm Heather Claveter, um Elementary Director of Academics. I've been with you talking about elementary um prior to tonight and I just get to bring it home with those highlights. As Dr. Pakel had talked about, you were given the literacy plan that we plan to submit very soon to the state. And these are really uh the main areas. I think there are a few missing pieces there. But just for you to, to kind of review, that um those are all the components and the details, the specifics about various reading goals in the different areas, like we have talked about ML, special education. You'll find that in that plan, along with specific details about our universal screening and the data that Peter had shared as well. Um, our parent involvement, all of our work with multi-tiered systems of support is within that as well, along with the new curriculum for elementary that we are excitedly um rolling out. And then of course, all of those next steps that um we have planned for, for Rochester Public Schools. So with that, we will go ahead and open it up to questions.
Can I ask one first?
Okay.
Heather, when you talk about the um targeted support for the middle and high school students and then it starts with the diagnostic assessment to identify where their skills and gap are. Um, what, and then you've got your literacy um map, the resource maps. What's the gap between, like how much work does the teacher have to do to go from, I know that this kid has these gaps and these skills? Does FastBridge give any direction to say, you know, work on, work on these activities to help them not have to dig through that resource?
Yeah, it does. Um, the Fat, FastBridge gives interventions or suggested interventions. And what we found is that they work pretty well for K through six. And then once you get above sixth grade, we have to think a little bit differently about how it might work. So for example, one of the interventions that they suggest is repeated reading. And so the protocols that they use um at the elementary might look a little bit different at secondary. So we might still do a repeated reading, um, but we might have the more skilled reader first and then we might have the student. Um, and we might just vary that a little bit because the student's older. Um, but there is always an intervention plan for the student. As long as you do the um fast track, um, and that's what we do for the screener, then you get an intervention plan. And then you can really look at that and target that for the individual student. We also purchased a curriculum called Rewards, um, which we've used for our tier-two um interventions. So middle school and high school, all of those middle schools and high schools will have access to Rewards. And that's a lot of multi-syllabic reading, um, and then also some practice with fluency, repeated reading, so that the teachers have that to draw from. And again, that would be like a success coach or an interventionist supporting the student. But then the teacher in the classroom might also use that same strategy to support them in the English Language Arts classroom.
So it sounds very individualized and very targeted to each student, which is wonderful to see. Sorry, Director Marvin got me first.
Thank you. I am, I'm not sure who this is a question for, but um. But who has the microphone? That's the first question. The second question, and this is a two-parter. How, with the new literacy approach and strategies, how will success and growth be measured? Is it mainly through FastBridge or MCA's? And I know there are very different tests with very different uses, but, and that's the second question. Do they correlate with each other?
Yes, they do.
Good answer.
Yes, they do. There's a microphone.
And is, do you use, I mean, you're looking at FastBridge and MCA scores, but you, if you expect if one rises, the other one will also.
Yeah, so FastBridge, um, I was reading this last week conveniently. Um, with a pretty high degree of confidence, it correlates to the MCA at about like eighty-two to eighty-six, like point eight-two, which is astronomical for a correlation. Um, each grade level varies slightly, but not a lot. Um, the other thing that we are looking at is um how well our cutoffs match the MCA's cutoffs. That's just a mathematical question more than anything, but that's another part of it. But yeah, they're actually highly predictive of one another.
Thank you.
And when you say cutoffs, you mean being a grade level?
Yeah, so not being, but like what, which of those four areas would you, where would you fit in? Correct.
I think um we'd also be looking at progress monitoring because we don't wanna wait until, okay, let's wait and see how they did at the winter FastBridge. So if we put an intervention in place, then we'd be progress monitoring that either weekly or every other week, depending on what tier they're in. And then we'd be looking at that data to see if we need to make it more intense or the student needs more time, um, or a different strategy.
The MCA is always after the fact too, right? We don't get those results uh in a usable format until the August following the school year in which they were administered. So we wouldn't be making decisions about individual students from those anyway.
So this is a little bit future, future-looking, but um what if any consideration has been given to the use of AI in helping to um figure out where students are and what they need? I know that there have been some really interesting articles in education about this, but I'm wondering, maybe this is a better question for you, Dr. Pakel. At what point might the Rochester Public Schools start to use some things like AI? And, or maybe it's already been, been done. Maybe it's already done now.
We, we need to develop an AI strategy, which will be one of the things that we'll be pulling together next year. We don't right now have any of these interventions that are powered by what we would call large language models. We did have last year in our Summer of Discovery, the hope of piloting an AI-driven reading uh tool called Dreambox Reading. And we had a little more work with Dreambox Math. Um, and so it, the, the experience was positive, but it was a very small pilot. Um, I think that that is clearly part of the future. And my personal take is that AI in literacy and in math is going to be much more useful for individual and small group tutoring than it is going to be for whole class instruction. But it's gonna be incredibly powerful for individual and small group tutoring. But it's not gonna replace the teacher with the full class. And if you wanna read a really good book about it, the exact title escapes me, but Sal Khan, who founded Khan Academy, which teaches kids over YouTube, has a, a very positive book out right now about AI and the future of education. Um, and it's a pretty good read. So that's, and he's very focused on that. Someday, will it be useful for whole class instruction? Um, almost certainly, but that's quite a ways off.
Thank you. Maybe um one example I'm thinking about, it's not AI, um, but it's instructional technology. It's called Diffit. So you can put in a text and it will give you um the level that you want for that text. So if you know that you're reading about a particular topic, but you want it at the fourth grade level, it can differentiate that text for the teacher. So our success coaches have used that a lot, um, just as a support. Um, and then we did use ChatGPT last week just to try and see what would come um if we were thinking about a text set and trying to build, like, what does it look like to build that knowledge around a particular topic? So we asked for, um, can you provide me with titles around a text set um that might build background knowledge? And I think you have to be thinking of it with a critical eye. We had to think about, you know, which of these suggestions are helpful. Um, but a couple of examples of things that we've been kind of trying out um as we've worked on curriculum development.
I would also add at the elementary level, there are tools being used, for example, Lexia, and even our really, really great reading curriculum that can adapt to the students' needs. Um, I think always when using those resources, there's so much complexity in the learners in front of us. So although I'm sure AI will provide lots of, lots of interesting tools for us, I find that a lot of times the teachers know the kids better than what the technology tells them when they're, when they're planning for those interventions, so.
I'm not in any way suggesting that machines replace teachers at all because I recognize the importance and the value to.
To students in the classroom.
To have a live human being in front of them.
Thank you. I love this topic and I'm so glad that we're talking about it. And I am going to make an earnest effort to confine my comments, but I am um, I'm deeply passionate about the importance of this work, the impact of it, um, the strategic value of it. And just to briefly um take a tangent. So often, the, the shift to literacy, the recent importance of literacy is cast as some kind of a return to uh years gone by when phonics was at the center of reading instruction. And in contrast to the last several decades of whole language, balanced literacy, all these other um kind of approaches. And I just wanna say that I, I very much do not align with that framing. What we are doing in Rochester Public Schools, and I hope broadly in Minnesota and elsewhere, is something that has never been done before. We are honestly trying to achieve proficient literacy for ninety-five percent plus of our students. Never has that been done, ever. We have been happy for decades and decades, in the seventies and, and before, at hovering around sixty percent, sometimes maybe slightly more, but always comfortable or at least accepting of a good thirty percent that were identified as dyslexic or not cognitively able to achieve literacy. And that has been the norm for so long. And I wanna emphasize that because what we are doing now truly is cutting edge. This is rocket science in education. And I, I wanna, I wanna remind people of that. I wanna set that um, that marker down because I think it informs our expectations going forward and hopefully um allows us to stay inquisitive, to stay humble. The goal is not to implement the Read Act. I mean, we're, we're gonna do that. We follow the law. Um, we're certainly gonna do that. But, but that's, that's necessary. It's not even close to sufficient. The goal is reading proficiency. And so I love that our, our updated literacy plan has specific identification of curriculum, down to the minutes that they are provided in the classroom each day. It's got a specific set of evidence-based targeted interventions for tier-two and tier-three supports at the K through, uh, at the elementary level, secondary level, that's, that's coming along so that we can have a coherent, common language for how we do this in Rochester Public Schools. But I love the idea that you presented, uh, Ms. Stanky and the um professional learning communities where teachers are asking themselves these questions. Because I, every teacher that I have interacted with on this topic wants desperately to meet the needs of their students. They want to be providing evidence-based best practices. They want to be supported. They want the professional development to be able to do this thing at a world-class level. And so that is my expectation for this district, for this administration, for this leadership team, for every single teacher that I interact with. We don't have very much time with these students. It's precious. We cannot afford to do anything but the very best um instructional methodologies that we have access to, provided by teachers with the very best professional developments, that are prepared and able to um offer that curriculum. And I'm so glad that we're doing it. But I just, I, I wanna emphasize, this isn't just flipping a switch back to the way it used to be. This is, this is grounded in decades of research that is not that old. The reading panel was in two thousand. It was followed by similar reading panels in other English-speaking countries, in Canada and Australia and in the UK. But all of this stuff is basically in the last decade, that it's truly being moved into practice. So our, our focus is on the students. If they're getting this stuff, great. And I, I, I hope that our focus is keenly on those students that we're not seeing much growth in. The twenty-seven percent in really all three categories that we looked at. We, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta meet them where they are, um, find out what those needs are. And so I love the progress. I love where we're going. No one should be happy with where we're at yet. We have a long ways to go. Expectations are high and they should be because the impact of not getting this right is profound. The thing that's so bizarre about all this is our, our human brains have been adapted over millennia to be really good at acquiring and using oral language. We're phenomenal at it. But it's only been like four or five hundred years that wide-scale literacy has even been attempted. And I say wide-scale, it, it's, it's actually a very small percentage. And only in the last hundred years that broad public education has even been a thing. And what we find out now is that the way that our brains have adapted, we've been good for the most part at oral language development. And it turns out that by random chance, around fifty percent are pretty good at translating that into written language, at decoding the oral language, defining the orthographic mapping, or inferring it themselves, and figuring out how to convert oral language into something with permanence and then read it back off the page. But another fifty percent require this very specific, evidence-based, explicit instruction. So if we don't meet those students' needs, if we don't provide the very best, those students conclude that they are not right, that they are not good at school and that they might never be. And they reach that conclusion themselves and they do it early on. So that's why the focus is in the early years and that's, that's why we're trying to continue to meet these secondary students. The lifelong trajectory of the students that reach that conclusion for themselves is severe. It's not just about the ability to read. It's about these students and how they feel about themselves. So my question. As I invite you to stay inquisitive, to stay humble, to think about how we get from where we are to where we all want to be, what are the pain points? What are the challenges? What are the resource needs? What is currently an obstacle that this board could help with? And I'd really like a response from each of you.
I took a lot of notes on what you said because I share your passion. And when we look at our data, as good as our data, we're excited about it, it's not gonna, and I share that with you. I think that, I, I had a couple of quotes that I, I failed to read before because I'm trying to breathe with our presentation. But the teachers that are, the special education teachers at the elementary level that are participating, this, we're often seeking their feedback. What do you need? How are you feeling? What, what more can we do? And the, the two that I wrote down was, I feel very confident in teaching reading, especially after our PLCs with problem solving. Um, and the other one that I wrote down was that collaboration increases confidence. So for um those, I think, resonating with me about how they're feeling with it, as we go forward, it is your support within MTSS and understanding that for me because we need. it is your support within MTSS and understanding that for me because we need time for our teachers to be together to continue the work in what is Tier One and then how do we layer out support. We, we have been doing this work in elementary, but not to the high level that we have this year. And as our teachers increase confidence, we have to be able to provide the resources. We're in a good place right now in elementary special education. Our early childhood special education and early childhood teachers are being trained, they're getting into. But I would, I would say it's time to move on and provide those resources at other levels as well and, and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Melissa. I will add, I think that it's equipping our secondary special education teachers with the knowledge on how to teach reading and then implementing it. So right now I think that that is our biggest, that's where we're, we're at and our teachers need to have that now, that foundational knowledge before we look at the resources. Because you can give a teacher any resource, but if they don't know how to actually implement it at that diagnostic level, then it's, it's not worthwhile. So that's where I feel like our barrier is right now, that we're, we're addressing, but it's going to take some time.
I'll reiterate that. At the elementary level, we continue to, of course, prioritize literacy and really prioritize the professional development. And we've appreciated your support with that too, but just like providing the time for teachers to grow and collaborate and use the materials. And when I say grow, it's growing in understanding the design now of our new knowledge building curriculum, for example, and functional phonics, just how to navigate it. And our teachers are amazing and they also need time to focus on developing skills with these new curriculums. The other thing I would add to the Fastbridge conversation about interventions, we have had our literacy team in the Office of Academics really dig deeply into the interventions that Fastbridge offers and have lifted up, lifted up a few of those that are more helpful than others, more evidence-based. And so we have more work to do to grow those resources. I know we've worked with Peter's department as well in all that are out there. So just like continuing to support us digging into those resources and developing and just the professional learning along the way too.
I think at the secondary level, the idea of flexible intervention time, we don't really have that consistently where we can say, no matter what, we've got this flexible time and this is when we can pull students and we can, they can flow in and out. So I think that's a piece. Teacher retention, because we're training everyone right now, but we have to keep them and we have to continue to support them so that they stay. And so I think that's a big piece of, of collaboration, support, giving them the resources they need. And then I think just giving teachers time to think about how to build in reading, writing and speaking in every classroom. Because at the secondary level, it's not going to be enough reading if they're only doing it in English Language Arts and with that intervention time. They need to have that experience in all of their classes and that takes time and planning. So I'm excited about the curriculum adjustment days next year because teachers will have some more time to collaborate. But I think those are three keys.
I think the curriculum adjustment days will be big, you know, as I was sitting here trying to come up with a concise answer because I'm known for being long-winded. It's professional development time for teachers, but also principals, at least from the assessment perspective. There's a lot of professional learning to go on among all of our groups, not just our teachers, about what is the assessment actually doing? What is it not doing? What are the limits of its utility? Are we putting too much emphasis on them? In many cases, yes. And then once I have a really good strategy that's consistent, like how do I administer an assessment that's consistent across different settings to get consistent data? Then the second piece, and everyone's hit on it, is what do I do with those results after they come out the other side? And that just takes time for learning. And, you know, Fastbridge itself, you could spend six months doing nothing but learning Fastbridge, you'll still find new stuff that it does. And for many teachers and especially administrators, they may only touch it two or three times a year during the screening window. Others would be in there daily. So ongoing, and Heather, you hit on it, ongoing job embedded robust professional development is an extremely strong predictor of employee retention. So we're addressing more than one need by investing in it.
Thank you.
Well, and Dr. Cook, you stole the question that I always ask, that I appreciate, I appreciate your passion and you're asking it. I guess I want to ask maybe the superintendent to help us with just a timeframe in terms of resources. We're going to next be talking about the 24-25 budget, where it, as we've learned so far about it, we are maintaining the resources that we have now. The 24-25 year is when we're going to get money from the state to help us with the implementation of a lot of this. But we know we're also having a conversation of putting a referendum on the ballot in November that will begin to impact the deficit that we'll have for the 25-26 year. Is it too much to ask to you to speak to what not passing the referendum could mean for our ability to continue to implement our literacy work?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have used our federal COVID funding in Rochester Public Schools to jumpstart this work. I think that was the right decision because we didn't have other resources to do it with. We would have had to make major cuts to purchase the curriculum, for instance, that you just approved. Fastbridge, we funded with federal COVID dollars. A lot of the professional development that Peter was just talking about with the COVID dollars, all of those, as this board knows well, must be spent by September of 2024. And so as Chair Nathan suggested, continuing this progress is deeply dependent upon passing a referendum in the fall because those resources will no longer be available to us. And as I'm regularly reminded by math teachers and others, we have equally important work to do in other subject areas as well. And so, for example, we were able to use that last tranche of federal and state funding to purchase these new literacy curricular resources. We are not able to purchase the new science curriculum for elementary that an equally dedicated team of teachers spent months and months looking at because we candidly right now do not have a revenue stream for it. Now, I'm hopeful that the approval of the referendum will allow us to move forward on that front and others, but that's the stakes as they exist for us at this point.
Any other comments or questions? Good to see you all again and thank you.
Thank you.
For members at 7:30, we have one more item on the agenda. Break or go forward? Now's your chance to request one if you need. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is 4.1, sorry, Prep for Action 5.1 2024-2025 Budget Proposal Review. It's the same Prep for Action item and we're scheduled to take action at the June 18 regular meeting. Is there a time to pick out?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Board members know well, John Carlson, our Chief Administrative Officer, and Andy Krogstad, our Director of Finance. John and Andy, the, the literacy team did an admirable job of keeping a lot of information concise. And so I know the same extraordinary accomplishment is about to happen with a lot of really important finance information. So as we talked about at the board meeting last week, or your last board meeting, this is not a year when the board is facing the kind of difficult cuts that you've made the last two years. And, and yet stewarding the resources carefully, I know, is a huge priority for the board. And so we scheduled this study session where we can dig into the data that you might want to dig into. I'm pleased to say that that will not have the level of challenge that I anticipated when we put together the board calendar, thanks to Mayo Clinic and thanks to the board's approval of the use of reserves. So let's enjoy it and let's get going. Thanks, Andy.
All right. Andy, you take it away.
Okay. I, I hope I can bring the same level of enthusiasm, well, I know I can't bring the same level of enthusiasm to this as Director Cook brought to literacy. Because, you know, numbers are numbers, they're not a lot of fun, depending on your perspective. But I, I am excited to have our, our, our session here today. As you know, we've been here several times, let me repeat, you know, all of the opportunities that we've had to come before the board. Before we finalize this next week, I did want to take an opportunity to express my gratitude to everyone in this district that has provided input into this budget. It's not my job alone, it's not John's job alone, it's not our team's job alone, it's the entire district that has input into this budget. And it's an incredible group of people that work hard to, to bring this together each and every year. It's important that we also remember, and I think Dr. Pikel touched on it, this is essentially, I think I've mentioned before, a status quo year. Not a lot of changes. Most of what is different has already previously been discussed. And so as I work through this presentation tonight, it's really about bringing all the pieces together. You're not going to see a lot of anything new. But I did want to just make sure that everyone understood that this is an opportunity, our opportunity to, to, to wrap up essentially before the vote next week. So I'm first going to focus on general fund because, of course, as you all know, is our, our basic operating fund where the majority of our activities occur. You've seen a slide similar to this before, the numbers are just slightly different, not on the revenue. The revenue is exactly the same. We have not adjusted our revenue projections at all since I came before the board in May. So these numbers stand true, again, pointing out that the Mayo Clinic donation is a sizable and measurable component of this year's, or I should say, next year's revenue. There have been some slight, very slight modifications to the expense budget. I believe it's gone up about $200,000 and that has to do with some added, some added costs in some of the areas that we've talked about previously, some of the literacy areas. But again, you know, in the, in the scheme of things, it's a very modest amount. And so what we've done though is we've essentially funded that with some reductions in some other areas and with our contingency. So overall, we still have about the same level of fund balance deficit that we had previously considered. And so you'll see, and again, it goes without saying, our teammates, our employees here are our number one expense. And that will never change, but it is important to note that, you know, there are, there are many other costs associated with operating the district. This is not a slide that, that we've presented before, but here is essentially the bottom line that we are projecting for the general fund this year. And so you'll see, these numbers will hold true unless there are any discussions tonight that would change them or if Dr. Pikel were to bring forward anything that would change them before next week. Otherwise, these are exactly the numbers that we plan to bring forward next week for the final approval. There is the $6.7 million deficit that we are expecting. That is relatively unchanged since our first expense, our first expense review, did we do that last week or the week before? I'm starting to lose track of the days now. But that is relatively unchanged and that amounts to essentially the health insurance contributions that the board has agreed to fund with our deficit. Our unassigned fund balance that we're projecting at the end of this current fiscal year is about $44 million. And I, I need to reiterate, that's a projection. So we don't know exactly where it will be, but our projection based on budget and current spending is, is that amount. When we reduce that by the, by the deficit that we plan to spend, that leaves us with a $37 million unassigned fund balance, which is still 12.6% of our overall spending in the general fund. And our target by board policy is 8%. So we are still doing very well as it relates to our fund balance, which gets us to the next slide. You'll see that obviously over time, it's been up and down and up and down. Last year, we finished the year with a 16.1% unassigned fund balance. The 14.6 is again where we projected to be this year, dropping to 12.6 next year. Should we continue on this trajectory, it will obviously drop below the 8% rather quickly and even further than that without some additional revenues. I want to take an opportunity to mention that we talk a lot about enrollment. Enrollment clearly is the main driver of our state funding. However, enrollment isn't necessarily the only driver of the fund balance decline. I did a little bit of research today and we are estimating, I need to put my glasses on, I apologize. Our projection is approximately 270 less students next year than this year. Now let me, let me make sure to qualify that. That is based on a study that was done three years ago and it's based on one of the four models that they provided. They provided a low, a moderate, a high and a recommended, they called it a recommended model. It's the recommended model that we've been following for the last three years. So essentially, it is something in the middle. And so it is just that, it is just a model. Because we know that historically the last three years, that our actuals have been about 0.6% higher than projections. So our actuals have been coming in each and every year higher than our projections. With that being said, let's assume that same trend continues, our enrollment would only decrease by 168 students next year as opposed to what's being, what's in the projection model is 271. So the next thing I wanted to point out too though is, and I need to pull up my, I went to sleep on me. I want to also just take a moment to point out our expenses. And you'll see it on the next slide just slightly, but I took a look at, oh, actually, I don't have it there yet. Our employee costs year over year went up 6.4%. Our revenue went up 4.8%. So right there, you can see that's creating a delta that is unsustainable. Included in that 6.4% though, of course, is the insurance cost, it's all employee costs. We had some, we had our settlement with our teachers which would be included in that. And so therefore, we had a year where we likely had, and, and we see moving forward some larger than perhaps normal increases. I, I can't project that that would continue, but we can tell you that the delta between those two is not just, or the difference is not just enrollment. And so there are a lot of other factors that are going into, into the deficit or the decline in the fund balance, let me say it differently, the decline in the fund balance. And enrollment is a very, 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 very small part of it. It's really our rising expenses more quickly than our revenue, revenue is not keeping pace. Let's take a couple of minutes now to just go through our FTE count. This, I, I've presented the total number previously, but not broken it out by contract group previously. We presented this, and I forgot to mention, we presented this to our, our community last week. We had two community input sessions, or I would call them review sessions, but there was input as well in the form of questions. If I, if I, Chair Nathan was so gracious to be in both of those sessions. In addition to Chair Nathan, we had, I think, over the course of both the noon meeting and the evening meeting, I think we had about 15 attendees. So not really a large group, however, there were questions that came out of both sessions. And it was great to see the level of engagement from those that were present. But we did present this to them in just, again, full transparency. This is the comparison of our FTE that we're proposing this year as compared to the original budget that you approved last year. So there is, if we move forward then and continue to show the rest of the contract groups, you'll see that there is an overall increase of about 22 FTE. This is broken down further in a, an attachment that I provided previously because again, the FTE has remained fixed at 2, 2,602.9 FTE since I originally came to you in May. So that number has not changed, so the FTE breakdown that you have previously seen is So here now is the, the So here now is the, more of the roll-up. This is all of our employee costs, not just general fund, but all of our employee costs. And again, I think because of rounding, that went up to 6.5, 6.4, I think it was 6.49 or something like that. But you'll see that our original budget called for $238 million of employee costs last year. This year, it's rising to 253, that's a $15 million increase. The largest share, of course, of that is in the benefits, that would be for your health We spent a fair amount of time the last few weeks on general fund, but of course, the district has several other funds that it operates, including food service, community education, construction. We have several internal service funds. They're not mandated by MDE, but we use them for tracking purposes, including our dental and health trusts. I am happy to say that we are projecting, in our health trust, to increase the fund balance. If all of our projections remain true, or are true, we expect to increase that fund balance by about $1.6 million. That's a fund that has continually decreased year over year due to our rising health costs. Some of that increase is due to the fact that there are greater premium contributions, not only by the district, but by the employees going into that fund. We also, through our work with Health EZ, we are beginning to see a bending of the curve downward, we believe. And we do think that there are some practices that they are implementing that we believe will show us greater cost savings in the future. It's pretty early to tell yet, we're only five months in, we have data through the first quarter, but we do believe it's promising, and I do believe that it would be important for us to provide perhaps a greater update for you in that, as we get close to our open enrollment period again. But that's a very promising change, again, very early to tell, but we're hoping that the trend continues. As you take a look at the rest of the fund balances though, you'll see that in all cases, we are continuing to show a positive fund balance at the end of the year. Certain funds are losing, of course, are reducing. The debt service fund going down is actually a good thing, of course, we're paying off some debt. The dental trust, we are projecting, we haven't, the, what is it, the insurance group, the insurance...
Employee insurance benefit.
Employee insurance benefit group hasn't weighed in yet on premium increases, but in the budget, I am proposing a modest increase in the dental premiums to hopefully offset some of that loss. We can even see, perhaps it would be greater if we didn't have that increase. We also see a fair number of our employees are taking that dental insurance coverage because it is very, very reasonable. Even for a family, it's very reasonable. And so therefore, it is a very active account. Obviously, our dental costs are less than our healthcare costs, but still one of those that we want to keep an eye on. I want to also just take one moment and touch on our construction fund. As you can see, we have a fund balance that we project to end with this year. That fund balance is a result of previously issued debt that is paying for those construction projects, that have been approved as part of our long-term facility maintenance plan. And some of those projects that we have issued purchase orders will not actually come, they're in process, but we will of course not have all of that expense this particular year. Much of it will roll over, so the revenue will follow, or I should say, the expenses will follow and reduce the fund balance. So think of it as you have a savings account, and when you pay your bill, you will transfer money from that savings account to fund your purchase. We're doing the same thing, where we have the savings, the money already for those construction projects that have been approved, and we will then draw from that. So a negative use in that fund balance is not, is okay, because we have the money, we have the cash in that account, or in that fund, I should say, to accommodate those expenses. Final two slides, we're going to pull it all together now. So from a district's perspective, this is looking at all of our funds and all of our revenue across all those funds. I once again wanted to continue to point out Mayo Clinic, even at a district level, it is a measurable share. It rounds up, it's a little less than 3%, but I kept it 3% because it does round up, as I use rounding in this particular instance, just to have whole numbers. But again, it's still a measurable amount of money. Our tax levy, that's a number that you maybe have seen previously, it would have been on our certification previously, 76 million. We have other local revenues, our state monies, and of course, our federal monies. That rounds out our $389 million of revenue. Then on the expenses, again, district as a whole, salaries, wages, combined for, salaries, wages, and benefits combined for 59% of our overall district spend. You'll see purchase services, we've talked about that previously, again, that would be contracts for our construction, that's going to be some of those contracts. It's going to be insurance, it's going to be utilities, things of that nature. And ultimately, that rounds out then the total expenses of $429 million. And again, there is a difference between our revenues and our expenses, but that has to do with our fund balances that exist, that allow for essentially those non-matching revenues and expenses. So with that, I would open it up to any additional questions, but I'm hoping that we've been able to tie it together. This information will also be uploaded to Symbly tomorrow for next week, along with a couple of other, there's a memo that details some of the information, but there's also some attachments that will be provided, similar to what you've already seen. So I don't expect you to see really anything new before next week, but I am happy to answer any questions or provide any other information that you may need.
Director Barlow?
Excellent presentation, Andy. Quick question regarding general fund total expense. I noticed salary and wages, employee benefits on Slide 4 totaling close to 79%. And then on your, toward the end, it is only representative of 59. I was just kind of curious for the difference.
In the all funds, it takes into account then the construction projects and stuff that are outside of the general funds. You put it all together, then the employee shares just a little bit less.
Thank you.
Because none of those other funds, a couple of them have some employees, but the vast majority, 99% of employees are all in the general fund. So there are no, really no added employee costs when we bring in those other funds.
Director Cut?
Well, I wanted to first emphasize how grateful I am as a board member, and I think the entire district should be, of the efforts that were taken to increase revenue for the next year that were outlined at the last meeting, by appropriately receiving compensation in the district for the services that are being provided and are reimbursable via insurance, because as I look at the five-year forecast that was prepared at the end of last year, that additional revenue puts us in a situation where we aren't looking at reducing some other services elsewhere in the budget. And so that, I just, I think that was, that effort provided tremendous value to us, so thanks for that. And then the thing I wanted to clarify is on the health trust fund, with the balance that it has, and recognizing the projected expenses, which is necessarily going to be sort of a probabilistic estimate or forecast or something, but with a balance of a little over half a million, and projected expenses of 32 million, what happens operationally if we get into a situation where, you know, in the first quarter of the next fiscal year, there's a larger-than-expected set of expenses?
Sure.
And that balance goes negative? Like what is the outcome? What happens?
Well, the fund can go negative during the fiscal year. It can actually be negative at the end of the year. But in the long term, what would happen is the general fund would need to cover...
Sure.
...whatever that deficit amount is. So as we project contributions through premiums, and then obviously the work we're doing to try to lower costs, it's our hope that we never get there. And I would just point out that the $2 million that we would be projecting at, again, at the end of the next fiscal year, that only, that accounts for, that's not even one month's worth of actual healthcare costs.
Yes.
Because we're factoring in, you know, again, for healthcare, about $35 million. We're going to be a little bit in that last next year because we've seen the trend, but again, we're in that 32, 33 million range, depending on the given year. So having a balance there is important. If we go negative though, that's okay. We have to understand that we have to make some strategic decisions about how to fund that then, whether we would raise premium contributions from sources outside of the general fund, or if we would just have the general fund cover whatever that deficit amount is.
But then that's, the way I'm thinking about it then, is that that's yet another rationale for the importance of maintaining appropriate reserves in the general fund in excess of that 8%, or at a minimum at the 8%.
Correct.
So that there is that liquidity there to make sure that health expenses are paid when there's balance, among other things.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Director McLaughlin?
Your mention in the community review sessions reminded me of the tech problems I had last week. Were those recorded, and if I or others want to review them?
Did we, I think we did record, I think we recorded the news.
Actually, I don't think we recorded them, because we fully intended to give basically the same presentation tonight, and he covered substantially exactly the same material as we did at that session. And I did document the questions that were asked at that session.
Thank you, John. I didn't remember if we did or not.
Could you add those questions to the content tonight?
Yes, I have them, I can certainly share them with you if you want them.
That'd be great.
Director Warkman?
So in Slides 3 and 11, you have several different, five different categories mentioned for the total revenue sources. Could you elaborate a little bit on what other local might entail? I see a tax levy in the state and a federal.
Other local is going to be, what comes to mind immediately would be, for example, the third-party reimbursements that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. It's going to include patron admission fees for activities, it's going to include activity fees for students that participate. That's going to be some of those items that are in other local.
I mean, that seemed, especially in the total revenue for all funds, that 16% seemed like a really large part of the budget.
Sure.
So I was just wondering, how long did we get there?
Absolutely. The other local, because we operate the internal service funds, one fund, the general fund, is paying the other fund, the internal service fund, for our healthcare. That money is shown in that fund as revenue.
Okay.
So essentially, it looks like there's $62 million of new revenue, but on the books, it's really revenue, expense in one and a revenue in another. So we add that all together.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think as is the case with every time we talk about the budget, it's important to go back and look at that chart of all of the other funds besides the general fund, and remind people that we cannot take from those funds to help the balance in another fund, or to cover the expenses in another fund.
That's correct.
Designate, well, I'll let you say it.
Restricted. No, they are restricted. So food service is restricted to that particular function, as is community education, so that would be a true statement.
And I, oh, did you remember? Okay. And then, when we look at the FTEs, the employee FTEs by the different contract groups, I know that one of the concerns from our community in conversation during the last referendum and conversation annually, when we talk about the budget, is our overabundance of administration. And compared to, you know, the classroom versus administration. And I think that this chart ably demonstrates, and we have had reductions in previous years indeed, in some of the district administration, that relative to our teachers, our education support professionals, student nutrition services, mental and physical health professionals, our clerical, our maintenance, these people who are in the buildings and the classrooms, the vast majority of our FTEs go to that and do not go to administration. And I don't expect you to know off the top of your head what the percentage was.
I believe it was 83% we calculated and shared with you last time.
Right.
That is direct student facing each and every day.
Right. So 83%. All right, board members, any other questions?
Well, then conversely speaking to Andy, the percentage represented by administration, cabinet, superintendent cabinet administrators, that, I thought that was the direction you were going in Kathy, but, and you may not know the percentage offhand, I'm just kind of curious, because sometimes the statement is made while we have so many, and we can look at the number, but I would be curious regarding the percentage of the total, or the percentage of the total employees.
Well, it'd be, you know, it'd be the difference. So 17% is going to be made up of the board superintendent, cabinet, administrators would be included in that group, as would the community education.
That's not just what you think of nutrition and education, that's much larger than just community education.
Many of the community education employees would be included in other groups. This particular group, line item right here, would be just the early childhood assistance. Otherwise, if they're a teacher community, they'd be part of the teacher group. If they're in the, if they're an operations-type position, they'd be included in the operations. And so, but another big one that we did not include in the 83% is maintenance, for example, or clerical. Those folks are in the schools each and every day, supporting the effort to go on in the schools. We didn't include them in the student-facing 83%, for example. But there's a fair number of, obviously, of FTE there as well.
I think Director Barlow, it's actually a very timely question, and we will, there's a definitional task there, because I think when people think of administration, they think of people who actually administer things, and then there's people who process payroll and things like that. So we'll take a look at that, and I think that's a good time to press a share.
Board members, any other questions, besides our gratitude for all of us? Virtual sessions were excellent. I'm sorry more people didn't come, because every time we explain it, I understand it more, and I welcome our community to try to understand it more, because you are providing a lot of transparency in this process.
Great. Was I as enthusiastic as Director Cook? Or did I?
As enthusiastic as the words can be.
Well, I tried.
This is how we do the literacy.
Yes, yes. It's all related, John. Thank you. Our next item, under other business, are board questions and responses. There were questions submitted by board members before the meeting, and you can find that in our agenda. Our annual board calendar A, B, C, D update, would any, are there any other items a board member would like to bring for consideration on a future board meeting agenda? Hearing none, our next board meeting is June 18th, a regular meeting, then a regular meeting on July 16th, then a study session on July 23rd, and a regular meeting on August 6th. And a reminder that that is a change in time from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to accommodate national night out. All the other meetings are at 5:30 p.m. Hearing no other business, we are adjourned at 7:50, 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Good.
Clear.